I know sometimes, to be honest with you, I probably do disappoint her, but that is my cause, I think what she would do. Hopefully that I do not disappoint her very often. Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. We thank you for joining us here today. As a courtesy to those in attendance and to facilitate the conduct of our business, we ask that you please turn off or silence all electronic devices. Madam clerk?
Item six, resolution to approve the 10-square townhomes tax increment financing redevelopment project plan located at 618-636 North 46th Street in an amount up to $835,500.
The public hearing on item six begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes. Good afternoon. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. This TIF project is a townhome development, 10 market rate units, four sale units. The site is a little west of Saddle Creek, Saddle Creek here. It overlooks Family Fair Grocery. Project cost is about $5 million. They're requesting $835,500 in TIFs.
Can you try moving the mic closer together?
Okay.
A little better, and I think people that are watching TV, they wouldn't have been able to hear it.
Okay, yeah. This TIF project is a townhome project. Located a little west of Saddle Creek. Here we see it overlooking the Family Fair Grocery Store. 10 units in one structure. Total project cost a little over $5 million. We have some renderings. The applicants are requesting $835,000 in TIF support. It's Dream Vesting Capital Group, managed by Jerry Schlickburn. Project's been approved by the planning board. TIF committee complied with our city master plan. We ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Good afternoon. Michael Sands, 1700 Farnham Street, on behalf of the applicant. This project's been two years in the making. We're very excited to get it going. Wanted to thank Councilman Festerson for his input along the way. Asked for your support today and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I didn't get to finish last week, but on the topic of TIF, I understand there is an amendment in process that will extend this type of financing for 20 years instead of 50.
Mr. Store, we're not here to talk about ballot initiatives. We're here on item six.
Okay, I'm opposed to any TIF, including this one, because it's a plan for repayment. Do I get to repay? I don't think so.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Pauls, Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes. Mr. Seaton, would you turn it off?
Motion passed seven to zero. Item seven, an application to consider a class C liquor license for a liquor store located at 5402 North 90th Street, Suite 5450.
The public hearing on item seven begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, Mike Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue. This is, even contrary to the name, Catman Dubar is actually just a package store. The only reason we did a C license was for tastings. So this is strictly a package store. So I believe they're here if you need any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Pauls, Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seven is approved, seven to zero. Item eight, an application to consider a class C liquor license for Cool Greens located at 8990 West Center Road, Suite 170. A is communication and support.
The public hearing on item eight begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, again, Mike Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue, appearing here on behalf of the applicant. This is a Cool Greens. This is healthy fast food, if there is such a thing. The alcohol here is strictly complimentary to restaurant.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Pauls, Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eight is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearing on agenda items nine and 10 were held on September 29, 2020. Roll call.
Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Pauls, Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items 11 through 17 are today. If you wish to address the council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address. Identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent.
Remove 17.
Item 17 is removed from consent. It'll have a separate public hearing.
Do you want me to take this off?
It's up to you.
I'll leave it on. I'm here for item 11. My name is Crystal Reynolds. I'm with Sedexo. My address is 17504 County Road, P-19, Blair, Nebraska, and I'm here pertaining to the liquor license with Sedexo.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on the consent resolutions other than item 17?
I'm Deputy Chief Michelle Bang with the Omaha Police Department. I'm here on item number 16, the Cortica Wellness Application. I'm a proponent for the purchase and can either present some prepared remarks or simply answer any questions.
Thank you. Unless there's questions or anyone wishes the presentation, you're free to stick around.
Okay. Thank you.
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I am against number 16. When I think through history, I think of a ride-along person that rides along with the cops and helps identify people that need help or need detainment. It just doesn't really explain to us what that's for. But I believe I have heard discussions in the past that that's what it is for. It's for, kind of like in the old days of the Russian Revolution, they had people called a commissar that would walk around the neighborhood and point out people that maybe needed help or needed detainment. Against it for that reason. Thank you.
The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Pauls, Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearing on item 17 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
I moved to lay this over until November 10.
Roll call.
Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Pauls, Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 18, an ordinance approving a contract with NebraskaLand Recycling LLC in the amount of $2,282,800 for the Omaha Mixed Recyclables Processing 2021-2030 Package A project. A is communication and support. B is communication opposition. C is documentation from the Public Works Department.
The public hearing on this item was held on September 29, 2020. What's the pleasure of the council?
I moved to lay this over to October 20.
Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Oh, sorry. I moved to lay this over to October 20.
Okay. Any other remarks? We have a motion as second. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
I'd like to have a conversation with Marty Bealik if you might come down. I think I saw him from the mayor's office. Is there a motion as second, Mr. President? Do you want to go over?
Yes, there is.
Okay. I don't know that I'm opposed to that, but I would just, I guess, observe today after, we've had a lot of dialogue about this, that, again, I don't know that I care who does the recycling processing for the community, but for, I want somebody who's capable and who is going to process the materials we expect and do so in a responsible way and be in a responsible neighborhood and a responsible employer. But the tough situation I think we find ourselves in, at least myself, is that I think we do have a capable processor right now who has done a good job and is responsible and does handle those materials well for the city and has grown in sophistication over time with their operation. But we also have a low bidder being recommended by the mayor's office who might be at the start of that journey but has a similar processing operation that we think can improve over time and probably handle this contract, at least according to the Public Works Department, Finance Department, and the mayor's office. So in deliberating this, I guess my dilemma is, in talking with the mayor yesterday, that she feels strongly that in this contract, she has recommended this contract to the city council as the low bidder, and should this contract not be approved today, or I guess in two weeks, or whatever the layover date was, she has made it clear she would not select another bidder. So I guess, Mr. Bealik, I just wanted to make sure that that was still the position of the mayor's office and maybe have a conversation with you about that.
Yes, that still is, Marty Bealik, Mayor's Office, 1819 Farnham Street. Yes, that is the position of the mayor's office. We feel like we did select the lowest and best bid. After due diligence, our advice is your advice. We get it from Public Works. We get it from the Finance Department. And she has, she does feel that if this doesn't pass today, that she might be forced to do business with Nebraskaland on a day-to-day basis, just pay the daily rate, and do that for a time until we figure out how to resolve the issue.
And to me, that's concerning, only in the respect that, for me, a recycling advocate, I want to have a contract, right? And I want to have a long-term contract. I prefer the 10-year proposition that has been recommended to us because it does lock in the city into doing that and syncs that contract, processing contract, up with our waste hauling contract and those recycling responsibilities. If we don't have a contract, it might shift to a month-to-month or a day-to-day situation like you're describing, which pays retail rates, or even worse, someday might pay landfill rates and landfill recycling, and that would be a totally unacceptable outcome of all this. So it puts someone like myself, I think, in a difficult position. Do you have a position on the suggested layover?
The, well, there's a couple of thoughts that come to mind. The, we do have options here. This isn't like the trash contract where the company has to be big enough to handle the entire city of Omaha, and we don't have the ability just to simply say, well, if the company fails that we're doing business with now, we'll just go to an alternate company existing in town somewhere. That's not possible with trash, but it is with recycling. There's other ways to recycle. We will always recycle. We don't expect that there would be much of a hiatus. We have options, is what I'm trying to say. So the risk is somewhat minimal in this particular case. We did, we all did our site business. We all did our due diligence. We all got advice from the Public Works Department. They are our experts. We are convinced that not only can they recycle, but they can do it in an environmentally friendly way. And we also have information that the company that we're about to do business with is on sound financial grounds as well, and that's why, that's why they are our lowest bid and that's why they are our best bid. And we feel strongly about that. Does that answer your question?
Yes, and I know that, should this contract get approved, I know the clock is ticking for another processor to get up and running and to handle these things starting January 1st. So I understand there's probably some urgency on the, from the perspective of Nebraskaland. Maybe my last question for you, Mr. Bealik, is, I don't know what'll happen today or whenever the layover occurs and when this vote occurs. Do you anticipate any scenario that would end with the city taking recyclables to the landfill and not processing them?
The only way we would take recyclables to the landfill, and I know you know this, is that if they became polluted to the point where they had to go to the landfill. Otherwise, we and the mayor's office want to recycle as badly as every one of you, and we know the importance of it, and we, and will continue to do so. It used to be easy to recycle, as you know, because the commodities had a greater value. They don't anymore. So now we're end up paying to recycle, but nonetheless, it's important. And for environmental reasons, if nothing else, we'll continue to do that.
I appreciate hearing that, and I definitely feel the same way. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Festerson, no further lights. Roll call.
Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Pauls, Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you.
To 1020. Yep, yep. Item 19, an ordinance to amend Section 12-51 of Article III of the Omaha Municipal Code entitled "Prevention of COVID-19 to Extend the Sunset Provision." A is communications and support. B is communication opposition. C is an amendment from Councilmember Gray.
Public hearing on this item was held September 29. Councilmember Gray, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I would like to call up Dr. Adi Por, if I would, please, just for our latest report and to determine where we are in terms of our rate of infection and like-minded issues related to that.
Adi Por, Douglas County Health Department. Good afternoon, everyone. 111 South 41st Street. First, I would like to share with you that the last week has been a very disappointing week from my standpoint. We have seen a large number of individuals getting tested, and actually, that is a very good sign. We had more than 9,184 people who were tested last week. But we also had 1,154 individuals who tested positive. That was the highest case number that we had. And our positivity rate also was the highest since May 30, 12.5%. Our seven-day rolling average per million is 268 cases at this time, and just for comparison, two weeks ago, that seven-day rolling average was 174 cases. The age groups where we are seeing the increases are really 20 to 59 years of age. And I think that's interesting. It's not in the young. It's not in the elderly. It's in that middle adult group who goes out and is attending gathering. We have also seen an increase in COVID-19 hospitalizations, and the hospital CEOs, the chief medical officer of HHS, healthcare providers, as well as the governor. We look at this data daily, and we have meetings twice a week and talking about this to really try to see, what are we seeing in our community and what do we need to do? And what we are finding now, it's not so much about bad capacity. What is really lacking is healthcare providers. We are seeing staff is fatigued in our hospital systems. We all are fatigued. I can tell you, I think you and I are fatigued, but especially healthcare workers who take care of our families, of our friends, and of our neighbors. There are potentially five factors that contribute to the increases we have seen in the last week. Schools and colleges have started to be open. Athletic events are occurring in our community. DHM, Direct Health Measures Phase IV, has opened all our businesses and really tried to open up all the restrictions that we had. Labor Day has created a lot of family gatherings, and what we are hearing from the community is, you know, we may not have the big events, but we have gatherings at home with our friends now. Yesterday, I heard we don't have homecoming at schools because that's prevented from happening, but we have it in families. So that's what I think has a lot to do with it. Fall and winter is coming, and according to all experts, we can expect further increases in cases since the cold and dry weather actually increases the efficiency of the virus to be transmitted. Cold weather also brings people indoors where transmission is more likely in enclosed environments with poor ventilation, where social distancing is more difficult. 32 states have statewide face-covering mandates. It used to be 33, but Mississippi actually took their mandates off on October 1st. In all the other states, however, major cities have passed face coverings. Omaha was the last large city of the first 100 cities that didn't have a mask mandate. And all of those mandates, as far as I could tell, have been implemented by city councils. The only states like Florida, Arizona, North Dakota, and Wyoming, they are the only states that have no statewide mask mandate, and there are no cities that I could find that actually have specific mandates. So just a few facts. Why do we need a mask mandate or face-covering mandate, whatever you want to call it? Face coverings are a way to keep our businesses open and our economy flourishing. Mask wearing can impact if schools can remain open. Masks can help not to overwhelm the hospital systems, and scientific studies support that masks are a critical tool in curbing the spread of the coronavirus. There are 172 studies that looked at various interventions to prevent transmission of COVID-19. The analysis was published in Lancet in June of the summer and found that mask wearing significantly reduces the risk of viral transmission. The study co-authors actually said what this evidence supports is that if, if there is a policy around using face masks, it does actually come with a fairly large beneficial effect. Probably the most benefits of masks are due to the fact that people can spread coronavirus even before they show symptoms. Infected people can spread the virus just by talking. If you are talking, virus-carrying droplets can come out quickly. Even cloth masks can block a lot of droplets. Masks block respiratory droplets. Just saying a simple phrase found that hundreds of droplets ranging from 20 to 500 micrometers were generated. But most of these droplets were blocked when the mouth was covered by a cloth. So benefits of mask wearing has been well-proven. Models show that masks can block particles. Even a cloth mask can block particles 30 to 50%. It's a study by the University of Colorado. And we know that countries where the majority of individuals are wearing masks have been able to keep the COVID transmission low. At the end, I have to ask every resident, do you agree you want to have a safe community for all? Do you agree we want our economy in Omaha to flourish? Besides the three W's, wash your hands, watch your distance, wear a mask, we do not have other tools at this time until we have a vaccine or good treatment for COVID-19. I care for this community, and I am following recommendations from our medical experts. I'm listening to our business community presented by the Omaha Chamber of Commerce, and I'm also listening to the different school districts. And therefore, I have to recommend to you to extend the mask mandate. I do not make this decision lightly, but I think this needs to be a community effort. We all need to help each other to get through this pandemic, and we will be stronger for it.
Thank you. Dr. Por, just one other question. I got an email that, and I had not heard this, and I wanted to ask you, or Dr. Rupp, about this particularly. I got an email that said something about the CDC had downgraded the coronavirus to an outbreak. Have you heard anything like that at all?
I have not. It may be...
Dr. Rupp, have you, okay.
The chamber will remain in order or you will be removed.
I hadn't heard anything like that, and I just was wondering if either of you had heard anything like that.
I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I have, Dr. Por, and I don't know if any other council members may call you up a little bit later. Dr. Rupp, I wanted to call you up just for a minute because I wanted to talk about specifically, yesterday, several health providers gave us, gave us a warning, and it was a fairly serious warning about the number of beds available and so forth. I just want to know on the ground what you are seeing at UNMC at this time.
Yes, thank you, sir. We are operating near capacity as we were prior to the COVID pandemic and the hospital as a whole, which means we have very little extra capacity within the hospital. In recent weeks, as Dr. Por mentioned, we've seen an increase in the number of cases of COVID-19, both in Douglas County as well as the overall state.
Okay. Dr. Rupp, just for the record, if you could identify yourself, name and address, please.
I'm sorry. Mark Rupp. I reside on 100th Avenue in the city of Omaha.
My next question has to do with, I just talked about UNMC, but I'm talking about the health, the health system as a whole. Are we approaching a crisis? Do you see us approaching a crisis?
We see warning signs. If they are ignored, we could easily approach a crisis. We are not in a crisis mode at present.
Thank you. My last, the last person I would like to call up is Dr. Ali Khan. And as Dr. Khan is coming up, I want to let people know that the three people that I talked to, especially the last person that's getting ready to come up, Dr. Khan, I would encourage you to get his book. It's called The Next Pandemic. I've learned more from this book than, than I ever thought there existed in terms of viruses and so forth and how they work. I wanted to ask Dr. Khan before he came up so I didn't embarrass him, but I do think this is, this is a must-read book in this time. I think it provides valuable information that all of us need to know. But Dr. Khan, if you would come up for me, please, for a second?
Mr. Gray, one moment.
Yes, sir.
I do have some prepared comments.
Sure, if you would, please. Thank you.
Thank you for accommodating me. I'm pleased to respond to your invitation to speak to you today on the important topic of whether the Omaha mask mandate should be extended. I speak to you as an expert in infectious diseases. I'm a professor-in-chief of the Division of Infectious Diseases at the University of Nebraska Medical Center. I do not officially represent the University of Nebraska or Nebraska medicine, however. My opinion is based upon my training and approximately 30 years of experience as a practicing physician. practicing physician. I last appeared before the Omaha City Council on August 11th. At that time, I urged the city council to enact a mask mandate to help prevent the transmission of SARS-CoV-2. I thank you for protecting the health of the citizens of Omaha and instituting the mask mandate. I appeal to you that it is not the time to relax our guard against COVID-19, and I urge you to maintain the current mask mandate. To recap what I covered in August, face masks help prevent the spread of COVID-19 in four ways. If well constructed and properly worn, face masks provide filtration and protect the wearer of the mask. Second, face masks are very effective in containing respiratory droplets and secretions that all of us produce when we breathe, talk, sing, cough, or sneeze, thus protecting everyone the wearer may come in contact with. These respiratory droplets can contain high levels of virus even in persons who are asymptomatic. Because asymptomatic persons can transmit COVID-19, it is important that all of us wear a mask. Third, face masks serves as a strong visual cue that we are in the midst of a pandemic, and they remind us to keep a safe distance from others. Finally, fourth, face masks remind us to not touch our face and potentially inoculate the virus to our eyes, nose, or mouth. Subsequent to my testimony two months ago, data continues to accrue to demonstrate the effectiveness of face masks. On Friday, October 2nd, the Omaha World Herald reported that Dr. Caitlin Padati, the epidemiologist for the state of Iowa, noted that in Sioux County, Iowa, school districts in which students and staff were not required to wear masks had a 30% to 130% higher rate of COVID-19 transmission than school districts that required face masks. The importance of this observation should not be underemphasized as over 50,000 students and staff of the Omaha Public Schools headed back to classrooms this week. Furthermore, early Friday morning, it was announced that the President of the United States, the First Lady, and several other White House staff and members of the government contracted COVID-19. Now, we all hope that the President and First Lady and others have a quick and uneventful recovery. However, this should serve as a strong cautionary measure, message that even frequent testing and efforts to physically distance do not protect one from this virus. Face masks are a needed additional layer of protection. Unfortunately, in Omaha, with schools opening, the directed health measures being relaxed to Phase Four, allowing for nearly unrestricted operation of bars, restaurants, fitness centers, and the like, with the quickly approaching cold weather season and persons being forced indoors, and with continued COVID-19 precaution fatigue in the community, I fear we will witness an increase in COVID-19 cases. Indeed, recent data from Nebraska and Douglas County point to an increase in case numbers in recent weeks that rival or surpass rates that we noted with the COVID-19 surge in the spring. This comes at a time when our hospitals are operating at near capacity and are without significant surge capacity. Our state and local officials closely watch the number of available hospital beds and ventilators in our community. However, perhaps our greatest vulnerability is the relatively small pool of highly trained critical care nurses, physicians, and support staff such as respiratory therapists who are needed to care for these very sick patients. I can attest that these highly dedicated professionals have been working above and beyond since March. Although they will continue to perform their duties as, as long as is humanly possible, they are not inexhaustible, nor are they easily replaced. It takes years to train healthcare professionals to the level of competency needed to care for these patients. I understand that the public is tired of COVID-19 precautions. However, the persons who are the most tired of COVID-19 are the healthcare providers who have been working day and night, month after month, to care for those suffering from this terrible disease. I've heard some relate that the pandemic is a hoax or that hospitals have a financial interest in propagating the pandemic. Nothing could be further from the truth. Frankly, the data clearly documents the amount of suffering COVID-19 has caused for so many people. No one desires the end of the COVID-19 pandemic and a return to some degree of normalcy more than healthcare providers. Now is not the time to relax the mask mandate for the city of Omaha. Now is the time to reemphasize the need for all persons to continue to physically distance, to practice good hand hygiene, and to wear a face mask whenever safe distance cannot be maintained, and particularly when in the shared indoor airspace. I fear that relaxing the mask mandate at this critical juncture would be a very poor decision. I most emphatically urge you to protect the health of the citizens of Omaha and extend the mask mandate. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rupp. Dr. Khan, if you could come up, please. And I, I just want to state that the people that we're talking to right now, especially Dr. Khan, the, these are, these are some of the, these are some of the people who have some of the greatest skill, not only in the state or the country, but in the world. And they exist right here in River City, and I think it's important to hear from them. And so, at this time, I would like to ask Dr. Khan, you know, first of all, a couple of questions. Dr. Khan, I have a, a, we talked yesterday--
Yes, sir.
And, and we, I, I put in a, an amendment to this ordinance that rather than continue to do this thing every two weeks where we come up and, you know, we have to wrestle with this thing, and we have a public hearing, and people are opposed, and different kinds of, what is described in this book as junk science comes up and so forth. And so, in the amendment that I introduced, if I can find it here, it, I won't go into all of it, but it says, at this point, when we're talking about the entire city of Omaha, the percentage positive of COVID-19 tests performed for all zip codes encompassing the city of Omaha equals 5% or less for two consecutive weeks of a reporting period. You were talking, and we were talking yesterday, and you thought that that might not be the best measurement tool that we could use, and I just wanted to get your thoughts on that and any other thoughts you might have as it relates to this virus.
Thank you, Councilman, and thank you for the opportunity to present this afternoon. Correct. So I would pair--
Sir. Doctor--
I'm sorry.
Here, Ali Khan, University of Nebraska Medical Center.
Apologies. Ali Khan, former Assistant Surgeon General, Dean of the College of Public Health, not representing the College of Public Health. I reside on Farnham Street here in Omaha, Nebraska.
And you're at 4200 Emily?
Yes, sir. 4200 Emily. So, Councilman, I would, I would pair the positive tests with a number that has the number of cases within the city. So something generous would be maybe 10 cases per 100,000 per day on a seven-day rolling average would be very generous. That's still uncontrolled transmission, but it's a lot better than where we are now with greater than 25 cases per 100,000 per day on a seven-day rolling average. So I would pair those as probably a good number to decide to lift the mask mandate within the city.
Mr. President, just to have some further-- Thank you for that, but I wasn't quick enough.
Yes. Apologies. So we are currently over 25 cases per 100,000 per day on a seven-day rolling average. Control would have that all the way down to maybe five cases per 100,000 per day on a seven-day rolling average. So my recommendation would be pick twice of control. So it's still uncontrolled, but maybe 10 cases per 100,000 per day on a seven-day rolling average. And I will show that on a graph also to make it a little bit more apparent.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So thank you very-- Okay, I better stand near the mic while I do this.
If you could pull the mics off to the side, they'll move with you. There you go. The same, and the one other one. Just keep bringing it. There you go.
Okay. Thank you very much. So before I get started, I want to state that I've been doing this for 30 years all over the world responding to outbreaks. I have met maybe 30,000 to 40,000 healthcare providers over my lifetime in public health practitioners, and we are very fortunate in the city of Omaha to have Dr. Adi Poor, who is, who is absolutely exceptional of 40,000 odd people I've met all over the world at all levels of government. So I feel fortunate to be in a city where she is my chief public health officer. I, I have three simple points today and four or five slides to make those points. One is, we have the power to affect the trajectory of this outbreak today, right now, before vaccine ever shows up. One of the, one of the tools we have available to us is masks and mask work. And the third point is, winter is coming. So like you, as a pediatrician and an internist, I'm committed to having kids back in school, having fans back in stadium, and having people back at work. But to do that, we need to get our outbreak under control. The COVID outbreak in the U.S. is a unique American failure, while numerous-- I'm not sure the best way to show this to you. So this big green line here is the deaths in the U.S., and these little squiggly lines at zero are deaths in multiple countries in the world, China, Taiwan, Vietnam, New Zealand, I can go on and on. So we are an exceptionally, exceptional failure in the number of deaths we continue to allow in the United States every day, at least half, 500 deaths a day in the U.S. These deaths are real deaths. These are not people who would die anyway. What you will notice, this is a term called excess deaths. So all these little blue lines with the red dots on it, these are the excess deaths. So these are people who would not have otherwise died this year. And so, we have probably, even though we measure about 206,000 deaths in the U.S., it's probably more likely 275,000 people have needlessly died in the U.S. this year. Only cancer and heart disease will kill more people this year for a disease that was unknown 10 months ago, and we still have four months left to go to, on how many additional deaths we're going to see at 2, 500 per day. So we've killed this more than in Alzheimer's, more, more than opiate fatalities, more than car accidents, more in Alzheimer's, more in gun violence this year from this disease. Now, I no longer need to show you global data. I can just show you U.S. data. So you will see here, the bottom squiggly line is New York. I could add Vermont, New Hampshire, and most of the Northeast down there. All those cities have controlled their cases below this. In this case, 50 per million, which is five per 100,000. They've all figured out through three steps on how to do this. The other lines you can see, North Dakota, no mask mandate, South Dakota, no mask mandate, Wisconsin about to lose its mask mandate, and a couple of other issues with schools, Nebraska, no mask mandate, Iowa, no mask mandate. So this is what's going on right here. So in the U.S., we already have states that have figured out how to contain and control this disease. Containing and controlling is pretty straightforward. The option that we don't have available to us is called the herd immunity or infect everyone option. That will lead to about a million total deaths. And if this disease really causes reinfections like we see with the regular human cold viruses that are due to coronaviruses, herd immunity doesn't even count. The ideal strategy is vaccine. However, nothing is licensed at this point, and 500 people die needlessly while we wait for the vaccine. And if the vaccine's only 50% efficacious and a third of people decide not to take it, we still need to have the good, strong public health measures by our public health department now and through when vaccination starts. Starting today, and this is work that's going on, if, with a combination of leadership, decreasing transmission, so this is a public health strategy of test, trace, and isolate, and community engagement of mask wearing, social distancing, and hand washing, we can get this disease under control, get our kids back in school, go to stadiums, and get our economy working again. The second thing I wanted to say was, one of the tools we had was masks. Masks work. Ask 1,700 dead healthcare workers if whether or not they would rather have had an N95 or not while they were taking care of people. So masks work. They save lives. Here is some modeling data. I always show this with trepidation because it's just one possible reality, but from the modeling data, you can see we will continue to have increased deaths. This is deaths in Nebraska, and this is very conservative measures of mask efficacy. And you'll see that this will continue to, the upper lines, you'll see that increase going up. And if we had a full mask mandate in the state, that's the green line of how many deaths we could avert here in the state if we had a full mask mandate here within Nebraska. Let me show you this. So I know many people point to the increasing number of cases in Douglas County and say the current mask mandate isn't working. That is not the best way to look at what's happening in Douglas County. If you look in this room, you'll notice only 50% of people are wearing masks. On my walk from my apartment, only 3% of people were wearing masks of the 50 people I walked past. So, and then you also are not taking into account other things that are going on in the community. A better way to look at whether your mask mandate works is to compare it to a county without a mask mandate in this state, such as Dakota County, and you'll see how much higher they have twice as many cases in Dakota County in Nebraska than they do in Douglas County. So from an ecological standpoint, you could say, well, it looks like masks work at least 50%, you know, halves it if nothing else, right? So prove that masks work in a different way, although even I would be leery of saying that. But again, for the argument's sake. And the analogy I have is traffic fatalities. There's 129 traffic fatalities in Nebraska every year, doesn't change. You could basically say, why wear seat belts and why have speed limits, right? We're not saving any lives. And if you look at the data, it turns out that in July of 2020, when the most recent data is available, 13 of the 28 people who died were not wearing a seat belt. So when things are going bad, you don't stop your prevention, you increase your prevention. So this would be a very poor time to stop mask use. We need to accelerate and think of how do we engage our community to increase mask use, not just here in Douglas County and the city of Omaha, but across the state. I have one last point for you, if I may, sir. Winter is coming. So we know, this is one more example, fortunately, you all have copies of this. So in the Southern Hemisphere, due to masks, hand hygiene, and social distancing, they saw a marked decline in cases of influenza. We are hoping that if we continue these good practices into the winter, we can also minimize the influenza outbreak in this city. But we must couple it with making sure that everybody gets vaccinated. If you've never gotten vaccinated before, this is the year to make sure that you got your influenza vac-- this is the year to make sure you get your influenza vaccine. In any moderate to severe flu season, you can ask any of the clinicians, we have, we have healthcare system diversions. So the ambulances don't show up at the hospital they're supposed to because the ER is full of people with flu. So you have ERs full of, potentially full of people with flu. You combine them with ERs full of people with COVID-19, and things get colder and cases start to go up again. That would be a disaster for our healthcare system. So again, to reiterate, Dr. Rupp and others have said, we need to prevent this twindemic from happening. Our healthcare system barely was able to function with just COVID, let alone if you add COVID in a bad flu season on top of our healthcare system. And my final thought to you is, to everybody, let's be kind, be kind to each other, be kind to our neighbors, and be, please be kind to our healthcare workers. They have been working all out, 60 to 80-hour days since, since March. People who don't know what vacation looks like probably can't pick out their kids in a crowd anymore. Please stay out of the hospital, stay healthy, mask on, everybody.
Dr. Khan, thank, thank you for that. And before you leave, I, I just want to make sure I got the numbers right. Right now, we're at 25 cases per 100,000 people?
26.8, sir.
26.8 per 100,000?
26.8 per 100,000 per day, sir, is today's seven-day rolling average.
Okay. And what you are suggesting is 10 cases per day per 100,000?
Which is super generous because control isn't until you get to five cases per 100,000. But, you know, ideally, it'd be five, but 10, I think, would be reasonable. Again, I would defer to the public health expert in the room, Dr. Poor, but somewhere between five and 10, I think, would be very reasonable to say, okay, if you combine that with the 5%, less than 5% test positivity, that would be a good point to potentially release masks.
Okay. So, and, and Dr. Poor has said five per 100,000, and, and I think she's going to stick with that if I can get the not well--
Yes.
Do you want to come up, Dr. Poor?
You like five?
I, I should go.
You'll go with 10. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Khan. And I just want to say again that, you know, you know, I visit other cities and, and, and towns around the country, and one of the things that is, that, that I'm being constantly told is that we are a lucky city to have you, Dr. Khan, Dr. Poor, Dr. Rupp, and others in our community. You are the experts, you know the science, and you know it really well to the extent that I, I, I tell people all the time, I, I've shared this book with probably about 30, 40 other people, and most of them have picked it up and have called me to talk about it a little bit. So I am pushing it, but I, I, I do want to, I do want to thank you for that because, you know, we hear all the time from individuals that say, that send this study forward and that thing forward and what this doctor said, and every time you look into those numbers and every time you look into that information that you get from emails, you find-- that you get from emails, you find out that these aren't as reputable people as we thought they were when we first looked at them. So, you know, I'm thankful for the fact that here in this city, we have the class of people that we have here who understand this disease and know what we need to do to fix it. Thank you, I appreciate your time. There are a couple of comments I want to make, Mr. President, and I thank my council members for indulging me in this. I think my first question is one for the city clerk, though. I have a question, because this is an amendment, and I would like to change it to 10 cases per 100,000. Can we do that in?
Yes, this is an amendment from the floor.
Okay.
So you have the right to change that.
So I have the right to change it?
Please remove this individual.
You know, I'm getting a little frustrated with people who yell out and scream and talk and say things without being, without showing respect to other people in this room, especially the people that are elected here.
Give us a chance to speak.
Yeah, well, I don't want to hear it anymore. Here's where we are. This is what I would like to do, Madam Clerk. I would like to change the number from, instead of saying weekly reporting period or the equals 5% or less for two consecutive weeks, I'd like to make that 10 cases per 100,000 over a rolling two-week average.
Per day.
Per day.
On a seven-day rolling average.
On a seven-day rolling average. Thank you. Thank you. You're good. And you wrote it down.
I didn't make sure you were here.
Yeah, that's what I would like to change it to, first of all. And then, you know, a couple of things I just wanted to say, Mr. President. And again, I want to thank my colleagues for indulging me. I don't do this very often, but I think this issue is important enough that we need to talk about it. See, I think sometimes people think there's some sort of conspiracy that we're doing here, or that there's something that we want to do. This is some, this is some mandate that we want to do. I want to tell you all a story, and this is a true story, about several teachers that have called me. You know, the disrespect is unbelievable. The disrespect is unbelievable. And you know I'm gonna start calling it out because I'm getting tired of the disrespect. I've had several emails and calls from teachers in our community. And what these teachers are telling me, and I'm glad that our planning department and others are here because you need to hear this. These teachers, when these young people were out learning from home, they went into some of these apartment complexes and into some of these businesses where we have been addressing for a long time some of the slum lords in our community. And they are appalled that these young people have to live in the conditions that they're living in in order to try and learn because we've kept them at home and we've instituted this mask mandate. There would be nothing that I would like to do better than to end this mandate and get our children, especially those who are struggling every day in rat and roach-infested places. I would like nothing better than to get them out of there. But because this pandemic is real and because this pandemic is serious, I am going to continue to support the science, not the junk science, not somebody coming to me with some, something that doesn't make sense to me, and nor am I going to continue to tolerate the disrespect. I'm not gonna do it. So in this particular instance, while I would love nothing better than to get these young people back in school, especially the ones that are living in these slum lord conditions, the fact still remains that this virus is real, this virus is serious, and it needs to be addressed in the way that our professionals are telling us that it needs to be addressed. I'll relinquish the floor for now, Mr. President, but I may come back with a, with my amended amendment for discussion on the floor. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I just want to say that I agree, first of all, with the level of demeanor in our chamber. We can disagree on issues, but we also need to be able to have the discussion, and we need to respect each other. Many of you took the time to come down here. Many of you believe in one side or are taking their time away from their jobs in the medical profession, which I know you're already spending overtime as it is. And I appreciate you taking the time to come down here. I understand that we have people that disagree with whether there should be a mandate in place. I get that. But we have to maintain a level of respect for each other. That's what our government is all about. We can disagree with each other, we can disagree on issues all the time. But I can tell you, in eight years, Councilwoman Gray and I have maybe disagreed, but we've also had very good discussions. And at times, we've convinced each other or shown each other different things that have actually changed our mind on things. Not saying that's gonna necessarily happen in this particular case, but let's not, let's not laugh at each other. Let's not do that and make a scene. That's not how you make a difference, and it's certainly not how you garner respect or credibility. So I would like to give somebody that actually is very respected and respectable and has shown respect for the council members and this community, who I did not see making any of the laughter inappropriate comments before, but a Dr. Lee Merritt, who, because we've called up a number of experts on this side, I know that we have a physician here in town that has a different opinion. Before I bring Dr. Merritt up and give her just the opportunity to make her pitch, I first want to say, by the way, I fact-checked the CDC thing. That's what I was doing on my phone. That is not true. The CDC still believes this is a pandemic. So let's fact-check things before we go out there. I do believe that this is a pandemic. I do believe that we have lost a number of people to this disease in our country, and I think it's extremely unfortunate. And I would like to do anything I can to help bring the number of positive cases, the number of people in our hospitals, and the number of people on ventilators down. Now, does that mean that I think I should be passing laws that do that? No, I don't. I do like, do I think it's patriotic to wear a mask? Yes, I do. In fact, I have multiple American flag masks. I have political masks. I have a Don Bacon, Vote for Don Bacon mask. I mean, sometimes you can use your mask as a way to say what you feel. And anybody else could, Creighton, I have a Creighton mask, just like President Jerome. I wear masks, I wore the mask before the mandate. I have a policy in my office, in my own personal business, that we have masks. Do they prevent the spread of the virus? I don't believe so. The cloth masks don't prevent because the virus is too small. Is there, is there proof that maybe reducing the viral load will help limit the cases, which I think is what the experts were saying, although I would be careful by saying it prevents it? Because I think the reason that we have an increase in the cases is because when people are wearing the masks, I think they feel safe. And I don't think they're social distancing, and I think that's a problem. And I think we're spreading it with the mask on, so it gives people a false sense of security. So that, I really want to be careful about that. So my take, I don't know, I might be making the entire room mad because the people on this side don't necessarily agree with me, and maybe some of the people on this side don't disagree with me. But I think the one thing I just want to say is, I don't necessarily want to get into that argument. Do they work, do they not work? I guess where I'm at is, if they work, tell everybody to, let's wear them. I mean, there's a lot of people that can't, let's not bully them. So we all want to reduce the spread, and I get it, but we're all also gonna have to work together here. What I disagree with is doing, having a mask mandate that's gonna go into next year. I just think that that's a little extreme from the point of government, of having an actual law mandating it for people. And in fact, I actually think people might be more willing to wear the mask if there wasn't a mandate so that we weren't making it into some freedom issue, which I don't want it to be a freedom issue. Again, I say, wear the mask to be patriotic. I don't know if it works or doesn't work. It can't hurt, but I don't want it to be a mandate, especially for the people that really believe they can't wear them, that it affects them. We need to make sure our kids are getting to take their masks off with the six-feet barriers, that they get breaks during the day. My son's basically at least staying home once a day because he needs a mental day. He can't do it all five days. But that's where I want to see the community come. Let's not make it us against them. Let's work together. Let's do it because we want to do it. Let's do it because we don't know whether it necessarily works or doesn't work because we have experts from the people that signed the Barrington Declaration to the experts at UNMC. I don't want to argue with, I'm a lawyer, so I can't argue with medical experts because I don't have the ability. But let's not have a mandate. Let's all get together and do it because we want to do it, because we want to try and do something even if it doesn't work 100%, even if it does, only works 30%, I think was one of the things. Maybe it only reduces it 30%. The littlest bit might help get us through this pandemic, and it is a pandemic. I just don't feel that it should be against the law. And I think we might have more people wearing the masks if it wasn't, because we were all doing it, because we want to be kind, be careful, and be supportive. I like this. But I don't think this should be in law in our book. So that's where we kind of disagree, should be doing it. So just because we gave, and we gave multiple people who are for the mandate, I would like to give Dr. Lee Merritt the opportunity to speak. She only got three minutes last week, and I think it's very important that a number of people came down, and I would ask Dr. Merritt to come down.
All right, thank you very much. And, you know, I'm here just to give a different perspective.
Dr. Merritt, you have to identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry.
State your name and address.
Yeah, I'm Lee Merritt, 1-8111-Q Street. Excuse me. Well, one of the things I hear from everybody is, well, why, why are you saying one thing and other people are saying another thing? And I just want to make this point that, that there are always, progress in science and in medicine has to do with differences of agreement, and then we figure out what's the right thing to do moving forward. And, you know, with all, with all due respect, I mean, the people that have just talked have a lot of gravitas, they're experts in their field, but it all, it still boils down to the facts and the science that we figure out as we go. At one time, I thought this, I thought masks worked too. I just don't believe that anymore. And I'm just gonna present some things, not just, this is not just me saying these. This is from reading experts from around the world as well. And I just want to say one thing about, you know, there is, there is a thing in philosophy called a fallacy argument of authority, and that's just citing an authority doesn't make the argument. I mean, it's about, it's about the facts and the quality of the evidence. Science isn't a vote, and it doesn't matter if there are 172 papers on this side and two papers on this side, that's not how we proceed. Now, in fact, I want to say, if I could just digress a moment, I want to make a little anecdote, because this is something I always, too, when I was at the university, I always told medical students and residents this story because I think it's important to keep in mind how we can sometimes not be right. And I'm, I've been there, too, not been right. You know, George Washington, the father of our country, was a very robust guy. At a time, everybody was five feet tall, he was six foot three. He'd survived the American Revolution, he had survived the French and Indian War, and he'd survived smallpox. But he actually didn't survive medical authority, because what happened is, he developed a throat infection, and he started closing down his airway. So being the father of our country, they convened a bunch of doctors, six or seven doctors showed up at Mount Vernon, and they examined the patient, and they had a big confab. And they were deciding what to do when one young upstart said, you know, I just came back from Europe. And in Europe, they're doing a new procedure. It's called a tracheotomy. And we make a little cut right here, and we put a tube down, and it allows him to breathe around the obstruction until he heals the infection. Now, he might have survived that, but the standard of care authority figures said, no, we're not gonna do that. We're gonna do what's tried and true and what we've shown to be right. So they applied leeches, and George Washington died. And I just tell that story because even, even we can all be wrong about something. And I have to say here that I'm not alone in saying what I'm about to say. Just yesterday, three very prominent epidemiologists, one from Oxford, one from Stanford, and one from Harvard, I guess you have to have Ford on the end of your name to be prominent. But they, they came out with the Great Barrington Declaration. And this is essential, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, and I gave you a copy that you can pass around, but this is, this is the Great Barrington Declaration, you can find it online. And this is what they say in very short summary. Coming from both the left and the right and around the world, we have devoted our careers to protecting people. Current lockdown policies are producing devastating effects on short and long-term public health. And then they go into some of these problems, and they talk especially about keeping kids out of school being a grave injustice. But here's what they discuss. The most compassionate approach that balances the risks and benefits of reaching herd immunity is to allow those who are at minimal risk of death to live their lives normally, to build up immunity to the virus through natural infection, while better protecting those who are at high risk. We call this focused protection. Now, and finally, they conclude, those who are not vulnerable should immediately be allowed to resume life as normal. When I got online yesterday, there were 300 doctors signed on to this. This morning, there were 1,300. There were 1,200 medical scientists from around the world. These are PhD, MDs from major universities. There were 20,000 laypeople, that's in one day. So I know that what I'm, what I'm discussing with you, I don't want you to think I'm the only person saying it, and I appreciate the opportunity to come up here because I know many people that would like to say these things and just can't. So I want to say another couple of things about that. There, you know, there are, one of the things that I notice is that we're talking about cases. Now, and, you know, when this whole thing broke out, and I'm a spine surgeon, but I mostly do elective, in my semi-retirement, I do elective orthopedic surgery. And as an elective surgeon, I no longer treat trauma. So I sat home at my computer, kind of kicking the screen and wondering what was going on. And I was able to follow all these curves. And I will tell you that, you know, in New York City, we masked up to the yin yang. We masked everything. And they did enormous precautions. In other countries, UK, they did a lot of things. In Sweden, they did nothing. If you look at all these graphs, they are superimposable. They're a seasonal graph like we see in the flu, although this is, obviously, there's, it's slightly more deaths, but it's still the same shaped graph, and it varies by country. Another point to be made here is that what happened is, as, I noticed this, as the numbers started coming down, so it made it look like a normal seasonal flu graph, suddenly we started counting cases. Now, in the entire time, I started medical school at the University of Rochester in New York in 1976, a case was a sick patient. We didn't talk about a case of TB because you had a positive PPD. We talk about a case being a sick person. And suddenly, we're talking about a test. And I want to point out that there's been kind of a flu flaw about these tests recently because a senior vice president, his name is Michael Yaden, he's a former senior vice president and chief science officer for Pfizer for 16 years. And here's what he says about these tests. He says half or even almost all of the tests for COVID are false positives. Now, and he points out, there's two reasons for that. This is a PCR test. It doesn't test for a live virus, it doesn't test for a dead virus. It tests for a little snippet of genetic material. And one of the mistakes, I think, that was made in this whole big deal when we started is we assumed this is a novel virus, nobody's ever seen it, everybody's not gonna be immune, it's gonna be horrible. I worried about that when I saw it coming across Italy. But as it turns out, you know, we have coronaviruses circulating around us all the time. They're in this room right now. So it turns out there was some native immunity. And the other, and so, well, the point about the PCR test is that we, when there were a lot of people getting sick, then your chance of having a positive test really means something goes up. This is called the predictive value of a test. On the other hand, as we've seen, as the death rate starts going down, and it's very, very low right now worldwide, then your, any positive test you get has a chance of being a false, a higher chance of being a false positive. In the Navy, I worked at the Navy undersea research lab for a while doing research, and in the Navy, they were looking at sonar, they were looking at, this is called the Bayes theorem, and I'm just gonna give you an example of why this works this way. If you're looking for Russian submarines and you're off the coast of Hawaii where the whales are migrating, the chance of a positive blip being a submarine go way down. It's probably a whale, okay? If you're in Vladivostok Harbor, the chance of a submarine being a Russian submarine on a blip is probably very high. That's what, that's part of what determines whether tests mean anything or not. The other- The other problem with these tests is they're not benchmarked. Now, maybe the CDC test is benchmarked, but most of the commercial tests out here are not benchmarked, meaning they've not really been tested against a known gold standard, because we can't determine what that known gold standard is. You know, as he points out, these tests would never pass forensic evidence handling. And the other point he makes, which I think is very good, is that because young people tend not to be social distancing, they're going to parties, they're doing things. The fact that we have an increased testing of so-called cases, but increased positive tests in young people shouldn't be alarming. They're out there getting immunity. But the other side of it is, if there's a lot of false positive tests, you would expect to see them all across the age group, and that's kind of what we're seeing. You know, again, and I think he's got a lot of good points, but this is the one that really got my attention. He was asked recently, he said, so are we basing, we're basing a government policy, an economic policy, a civil liberties policy, in terms of limiting six people to six people in a meeting, all based on what moil may be, completely fake data on this coronavirus? And Dr. Yaden answered simply, yes. I mean, again, the jury is not completely in on any of this, but when you start taking away people's civil liberties, and when you practice medicine, the precautionary principle is, don't hurt people, you know, risk benefit. And so, the other point he makes, which I think is very good, is if we keep going down this road, and we keep doing masks, which will lead to potentially lockdowns, we're ignoring the people dying of other diseases. And I just made a note, since we were talking about Nebraska issues, we've had 400 deaths roughly from COVID, or 500 deaths, sorry. Forty percent of those were in nursing homes, which gives credence to this notion that we should protect the vulnerable and let the rest of the people become immune by walking around and be normal. At the same time, in Nebraska, we statistically will have 170 motor vehicle accidents, 3,500 deaths from MI, myocardial infarct, or heart disease, 3,500 deaths from cancer, and 760 deaths from stroke. In other words, in the time that we would have somewhere between, even if we get 200 more deaths of COVID, say we had 700 deaths of COVID, we had 8,000 deaths of many other So I guess the final points are, that I wanted to say is, I want to say something. Michael Osterholm up in Minnesota, he's a very smart guy, and when I was researching, you know, defense against bioweapons and thinking about bioweapons as a military issue, you know, I read all his stuff on smallpox, and, you know, if you want to look, if you want to look at, one of the problems here is, if you want to look at what really contagious disease does, I mean, there's so many studies, when you look at these mask studies, I guess I want to spend a minute talking about the mask studies that have been quoted, there are a lot of studies on masks, but, and there are a lot of studies on whether masks make a difference. Now, I gave you a copy, it shows all these countries in Europe, it shows when they instituted masks and when they had their outbreak of deaths. And it goes mask outbreak of death, mask outbreak of death, over and over and over again. That's a final, that's the final arbiter, in my opinion. It's not whether or not I can prove in this room that if you put on a mask, you catch 70% of your spit. That's not really the final thing. The final thing is whether or not it actually prevents the transmission of this virus and people dying. And it appears not to on any of these graphs that you look at. It just doesn't show that. And I think, by the way, this is just a funny, I don't know if I said this the last time I was here, but this is just a funny thing about masks. When I hear people talking about surgical mask, you know, there's three levels of masks, the N95 mask, the surgical mask, and then these ear-lute masks. Now, N95 mask is rated to filter out 95% of .3 micron particles and above. That's what we use for tuberculosis. They were always called TB masks, nobody ever thought they were viral masks. In the OR, we use a better mask than what you've got on, but it's still, it's got a nose piece, and it's got straps, and we can tighten it up a little bit. But here's what they teach you as a medical student. If you're going to sneeze, don't go like this. Don't turn away from the operative field, because you'll sneeze into the wound. It comes out the side of your mask. So there's a myth that, oh, if I wear a mask, somehow I'm going to collect most of the stuff, and somehow that's going to help. Actually, it's not the big globules that, and this is well described, I mean, well-understood in the literature on infectious stuff, yeah, infectious disease, that it's not the big globules that make people sick, it's the tiny little virions that float around, that come out when you're breathing, and they actually, I think this is kind of funny, they did a study on these, what do you call them, kind of the nylon fashion things you can put over your face, and they show that when you sneeze, you actually take the fairly non-infectious big globules, and then you fragment them into lots of these little particles that then shoot out farther and hang around in the atmosphere. So we might actually be making some things worse with a mask, certainly, I mean, and about transmissibility. I don't buy the fact of these studies on masks saying that they work. You've got to look at what happened when we actually masked people up. And it's interesting, so when I gave a talk recently, I looked at the death per capita. New York has the worst death per capita I could find in the world, and they masked up early on. They had .17% death per citizen in the state of New York, and it's probably mostly in New York City, on the base from COVID. Now, if you want to look at the very best places for, ironically, the very best places for mortality, it's Nigeria and Senegal. It doesn't have to do with masks. It has to do with your ability, they walk down the street, they're in Sub-Saharan Africa, they commonly use chloroquine and hydroxychloroquine over the counter when they get a fever, because it's presumed to be malaria. So there's another fallacy here, and it's the belief that the only thing we can do, we have no treatment for this, we have no prevention, let's all mask up. That's not really true. You know, we've known for years that vitamin D and vitamin D levels are critical in preventing viral death, right, viral illness. I kept waiting, this is one of the times that I was banging on my computer screen, I kept saying, we've given billions of dollars every year to the CDC, why are they not drilling down on the people getting really, really sick and dying in the ICU and hospitals? Because that's what I wanted to know. This is a very bimodal disease. Most people get a mild case and walk away from it, and some people get very deathly ill. Well, the Indonesians finally looked at it, and they looked at over 800 people, and they looked at what really made a difference, and they looked at all sorts of variables. And as it turns out, the number one variable was your vitamin D level. If your vitamin D level is above 30 nanograms per deciliter, you have less than a 4.2% chance of dying or being in the ICU. That's a big deal. And what happened? Dr. McCullough tried to report this, and his site was shut down, and he was threatened. I mean, I don't know what that's all about, but we know several things that can make a difference here. They just came out, and I've got the paper somewhere, on zinc levels. It turns out 50% of people that are very sick with COVID have really low zinc levels. And we know that zinc acts in conjunction with these lysosomal tropic agents to stop the production of virus. So those are two things we can do. We also know about obesity. It turns out, and I've talked to people in, I don't have a direct access to the UNMC and these big hospitals, but I've talked to, have a lot of patients who are nurses in those places, and they tell me the same story. It's obese people that are in the ICU. And I can't completely explain the link there, it might be because they sequester D, I don't know. But obesity is a big thing, so we know that's another thing. Selenium, we've known for a long time that selenium is also, I've heard multiple doctors say that selenium is birth control for viruses. So it's, so there are many things we can do. Ironically, now, this is the same-sized virus, and it's a highly transmissible virus, like influenza, both of them are about .12 micron viruses, they're transmitted similar ways. Anyway, in May of 2020, this year, the CDC itself published an article, and it went through, they looked at several interventions to see if they could stop the transmission of influenza. And they found out in very controlled study that you, that hand washing, although I agree with hand washing, don't get me wrong, hand washing is for a different reason, though, that hand washing, disinfecting your environment, and masks do not stop the transmission of influenza. And I have a really hard time believing if it can't stop that virus of the same size, little less transmissible and possibly less deadly, it's not stopping this, you know. And I'll just, the last thing, I'll just say, this is from Michael Osterholm. He said, quote, "Never before in my 45-year career have I seen such a far-reaching public recommendation issued by any government agency without a single source of data or information to support it." And he said, "The highest frequency of mask-wearing population in the world is Hubei China." That was one where we had virtually everyone wearing one publicly, it didn't make a difference. So don't get me wrong, I'm not here saying I want people to be sick, and I'm not here saying that this is not a problem, but I think you have to weigh, the way that there are other ways of dealing with this. And my, you know, I have to say, too, that, and I really will quit here, but there's another point to be made, possibly. We think short-term as Americans, I don't think, this is a geopolitical security standpoint, I don't think that people, potential enemies, think short-term. And I hope the National Command Authority and President Trump are thinking about these, because if we're willing to demoralize our citizenry, which they, we've created a bunch of children and a bunch of millennials that are terrified now, and a bunch of us getting kind of depressed because our businesses are going down, because people don't want to come into this masked environment. So there's a lot of demoralization going around, we're destroying our economy, and we're creating political discord over a level of disease which is barely above normal. I mean, yes, we lost 200,000 people, okay? But that's, when you look at the total number of deaths every year in America, that doesn't raise our total cause mortality that much. Think about what they could do, thinking, you could say, wow, okay, what are they, look what these Americans did when they shut down their whole world over this virus. Wait till we, how about Corona 2020 and Corona 2021? I mean, this can get worse, and we have to come up with a way not to do bad things to people to try and to save others. That's the other, the other point I'm going to make, is that, I took an oath to Hippocrates.
And Dr. Merritt, we are going to have to wrap it up.
Okay, I'm going to be done.
At some point.
Can I just finish this one quick thing?
No, I really appreciate all the information.
But I took, I took an oath to patience. I'm wearing the white coat not out of authority, but because it reminds me of my oath to patience. And the Hippocratic oath says, "Into whatever houses I enter, I will go to them for the benefit of the sick, and will abstain from every voluntary act of mischief and corruption." It's not the right thing to damage a 20-year-old and tell him he has to shut down his whole life when he's not sick, and he's not going to get, and he's not going to die for this, so that you can protect these people over here, especially when these are mostly elderly, nursing home patients, that we could protect in another way. We can't keep stopping everybody from living their lives. Quit picking winners and losers. And who do you think is really getting damaged when we shut down little businesses or inhibit little businesses? It's not the rich, it's the poor constituents that you have, and people that are struggling to get by. Businesses, I think we need to act in the interest of all people, not just this small group that's getting very sick. And that's why I really like the declaration. I hope you'll consider this. And I think we look at, there are so many other ways to help those citizens and help us and not do this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton. Councilmember Festerson, you are recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. And I would just thank everyone for their testimony again today. I think you'll find that we are listening to all comments being made, I know I am, as we try to work through this together and figure out the best course of action here. But I would say, in my judgment, this is still a simple and practical thing we can all be doing to get our kids back in school and continue our economic recovery. With 54,000 kids just starting back to school this month, I think it would be irresponsible not to extend the ordinance at least another 30 days. I'm not willing to take that risk. We've also heard in many of our public hearings, the concern about the economy, and I think we all are concerned about that, and that a mask ordinance might be hurting our businesses. I don't think it's the mask ordinance hurting our businesses, I think COVID has hurt our economy and hurt our businesses. And in fact, the reason why the Greater Omaha Chamber of Commerce this week endorsed this 30-day extension is because on behalf of its 3,000 members, it thinks it is helping to keep businesses open. And we have also heard from every major employer in town endorsing the 30-day extension for that reason. Just a sampling of some of them, First National Bank, Union Pacific, Pfizer, Mutual of Omaha, they believe that this mask is helping our economy and could help save $3.2 billion in economic activity in the region. That's not me saying that, that's their press release this week. So I just wanted to point that out, as sometimes that perspective hasn't come through in our recent discussions. And I also want to say, I think most of these letters are attached on the public record, at least they should be, both, there is opposition, of course, but there is support letters, too. And some of those groups supporting this extension, again, just a sampling, are the Metropolitan Medical Society, the Nebraska Chapter of Pediatrics, Westside School District, the LPS School District unanimously, some Miller District Board members, public school board members, the Steamfitters and Plumfitters Local Union 464. Just to give you an idea of the groups we're being contacted by that agree, this is a smart and cautious thing to be doing for the time being. And I want to recognize the public health experts that are here with us today. It's very unusual to have a press conference like they did yesterday, I don't recall ever seeing something like that, so I think that's testament to the concern they're expressing, and concern I think we need to be listening to as a body that represents the city. I will also say, I talked to the mayor yesterday on a number of different issues, and she supports this extension for those reasons. So I don't think this should be a philosophical or political discussion, unfortunately, like many things these days, that tends, it tends to go that direction when you engage on this issue. But I think rather it should be based on the data and the scientific advice we're getting from public health experts and officials and others, community leaders and constituents we have in the community. I'm definitely open to the conversation about adding a metric to the ordinance, as Councilmember Gray has proposed, and as others have indicated interest in last week, and possibly building that into the ordinance, because nobody wants to be doing this any longer than necessary. I don't want anybody to think that. We don't relish this responsibility. We don't favor mandates, but I think we're taking a responsible approach so far by taking this in 30-day increments and monitoring the data we're receiving and making judgments at that time, and that's how we've approached it so far. Many would have said, hey, do this through the end of the year. Many would have said, do this another six months. But so far, we've taken a very measured approach, I think, every 30 days in monitoring the data. I appreciate Dr. Khan's suggestion as to what that could be, the 10 cases per 100,000 per day on a seven-day rolling average. I imagine you'd also want to accompany that with a positivity rate analysis, that was not mentioned and is not currently in the amendments from the floor. I see him nodding his head, not to speak for him, because he's the expert, not me. So I think we need a little more time to do, to work on that, maybe have some consensus around that, if we are to put that in an ordinance like this. Because today, we are following about 20 different measurements we receive every week from the Douglas County Health Department, which we appreciate, but that exact measurement has not been on there, and I'd like to familiarize myself with that a little more closely and understand the implications of that, should that be added to this ordinance. And at the end of the day, I would say it's not about having an ordinance at all, and certainly not about having a mandate, it's about creating a common expectation and a standard throughout the community that we can all live with and live by and work together on as we try to work through what is a very difficult situation. So that's my perspective today. I do support the 30-day extension, I think it's the responsible thing to do, the cautious approach for so many more kids going back to school. And I know we have more lights, but I would motion to approve number 19.
Well, there's a motion that's pending on the floor amendment, so unless that's a substitute motion.
I would substitute motion, then.
No, there's, you're, under the rules, you're allowed a substitute motion. There's a motion on the floor to substitute, and Madam Clerk, is the parliamentary inquiry by Councilmember Melton is, can a motion to approve the underlying ordinance serve as a substitute motion?
I would say yes, yep. So the motion, this would be on the amendment, then. Pete would make the motion on the amendment, Ben would make the motion, or second.
This is on the ordinance itself, not on an amendment, with councilmembers.
Okay, so that's on the amendment?
Yes.
You can still, or that's on the original motion, you can still make amendments on that before the vote?
And let me just, so I made the substitute motion, let me just talk about that for a second, and we can decide how to proceed with that. Councilman Gray, I'd like to engage you. I'm willing to, I don't want to supersede your intentions or the conversation. or the conversation you started. I'm just expressing my opinion. If you'd rather me not do a substitute motion, I can withdraw that.
Um, what I think I want to do at this point in time, um, because I think we have time, because we still have time on the other motion. What I would like to do is withdraw this amendment and redo it, um, so that it, so that we're inclusive of a couple of things that you just mentioned, along with the, the, uh, the 10 cases per 100,000 people. So I think I'd like to, uh, withdraw that amendment at this point in time and bring it back again with, um, a little bit more clarity as to what we're trying to seek.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And then I would then move number 19.
All right. The question is this. Uh, there's been interpretation by the clerk. There was never a second made to Councilmember Ben Gray's motion on this floor amendment. If, and so the purpose and without the, um, comments being spewed by councilmembers, the question from the president is, did any one of you make a second to Ben Gray's motion?
I didn't think they did either.
Okay. So given that's the case, there's really no motion to withdraw Councilmember Gray because you never got a second.
Okay.
And therefore, the motion by Mr. Festerson also did not get a second.
Yeah, seconded it.
Oh, did he?
I did second it.
All right. So that is the only motion on the floor at this time. And procedurally, what is the, um, motion that Mr. Festerson made?
I moved to approve number 19.
As introduced?
As introduced.
Okay. And there's a second. We have further lights on. Councilmember Pauls, you're recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. One thing I learned today after listening to, uh, the previous doctor, uh, vitamin D, selenium, and zinc were very important. About 10 years ago, a virus hit me and it put me down. In fact, I was in a coma for, it was self-induced coma for about, uh, three or four weeks. And some of the, uh, uh, things that she suggested for this virus, I was taking it 10 years ago, so it's not really necessarily new, uh, adaptations to this particular virus. I've, I've found that interesting because I always wondered why I had to take an extra heavy dose of vitamin D. Uh, it probably was explained to me, but I probably wasn't paying attention because at that time I was probably sort of out of it. How I'm going to react today is just tell you some of the people who I've talked to or who have talked to me. I do understand schools and businesses do not need this mandate. They can create their own mask, uh, rules that they want to. But I've also talked to, uh, the three districts that are in my district, three school districts, Millard, Westside, or El, and Elkhorn, and they would like to see us support them, uh, in their endeavor to make sure students and teachers and other staff members can, uh, go to school, uh, and hopefully in a safe environment. So they've indicated that they really feel they need that to make it happen. And right now, I think in those three districts, things are going pretty well. I'm only speaking those districts that I'm involved in. So I do see, by discussion with them, they feel that, uh, we could be very supportive of what they're trying to do. Now I'm going to get talked to some of the businesses that I talked to, and I'm just going, and it's going to be some of the same companies that, uh, Councilman Festerson had mentioned, but I'm just going to go over some of the letters that I received, phone calls and, uh, individual phone calls and letters from companies. Uh, First National Bank, ConAgra. Now I know I may have missed some of these. Mutual of Omaha, Valmont, uh, Creighton, Nebraska Furniture, Union Pacific. And I talked to some of these individuals. They want this to happen. And there are still some other ones I have not talked to. I'll just, Logier, just today. Um, Children's, uh, of course, Children's Hospital and Medical Center. Uh, and I had a long discussion, uh, a couple of days ago with Dave Brown of the chamber, saying, really do you need some support from them? And if you read the article in the paper, they had indicated that this could be a $3 billion issue, uh, in the city. Also, um, Dr. Gold from, uh, Chancellor of UMSC, uh, Linder from Nebraska Medicine. And this goes on, you know, ju, just, it just continues. Also, like, uh, the American Academy of Pediatrics, there are additional ones. These are individuals who are concerned about. And that causes me to say, okay, how can we help these individuals out, these businesses? I, didn't go to them. They came to us. For them to be successful, they think the mask is a needed thing. They could do it, but if the city would help them out, that's what they're looking for. And if you go to, let's say, Bakers, as you walk into the store, Bakers, it says Kroger's mandates. But they, it's nice to have us agreeing with them. It makes life easier for everyone. So I'm sort of in a quandary right now. I want, I do not like, as I do get enough, a number of people saying you're infringing on my individual rights. I get that. But also trying to look at the greater good for the city of Omaha and the surrounding areas. So I, like I say, I am in a little bit of a predicament right there, but I've had a lot of people requesting that we do have this mandate. And, uh, I think that should be, uh, an indication of the direction I should, I probably will be going. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pauls. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized. Please turn off her silence electronic devices or you'll be escorted from the chamber.
Is it catchy tune?
It was.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I want to thank, uh, Dr. Rupp and Dr. Khan for being here today, as, as well as Dr. Poor and their comments, and as also Dr. Merritt, who I believe had to, to leave. But, um, I appreciate comments and really kind of education that we, uh, I, that we learned today, um, that backs up the point that, you know, science is, is not black and white. And there are different, uh, ways to look at things. And, um, that's why you, I think, you put up for research, uh, the questions that we're looking at today as it relates to COVID. And, and we can, as Councilmember Melton said, we can disagree. Um, we can look at the same facts in ca, in, in many cases and still come to different conclusions. But, but I, I appreciate the, now we've, we've had a, um, we did have some outbursts earlier. Those haven't happened. And I think that gave us all an opportunity to hear the differing, opposing, or in some parts agreeing testimonies from both sides of the issue. Um, I, I have said all along, um, that when I was asked to wear a mask at the beginning, I wore a mask. Um, I did so voluntarily. I think many people in the the community did so too. And when we first kind of started down this journey, um, or this process, one of the items we had on our agenda was, was actually a resolution to support or encourage people to wear masks. And I don't think we ever got to actually vote on that since the ordinance passed before that resolution could be considered. Um, and as Councilmember Pauls just pointed out, there are many in the community that both businesses and, um, educational systems, um, and others who have, who have asked for support of the city. And I was certainly, uh, prepared to, to vote in favor of the resolution, but I too agree that I don't know that we should be making it, um, a violation of law, uh, if you're not wearing a mask. Uh, I'll, I'll take a quick aside here too because, uh, I had a couple of people who emailed me who, who, uh, actually thanked me for some of the things I said originally about approaching people who might not be wearing masks. Um, and, and Councilmember Melton touched on it a little bit as well too, is that regardless of, of why someone might not be wearing a mask, I don't think that's my position. I don't think it's anyone else's position, uh, to necessarily go up and challenge or in some cases bully those people who aren't wearing masks. If they, if they know there's a mandate in place and they aren't wearing a mask, I think you should assume that there is a, a valid underlying reason why they're not doing so. So that's, that was my quick aside. But, um, back to the, to the, the mandate portion of this. Um, I too, you know, many, many businesses, um, had COVID, uh, policies in place, uh, before the city of Omaha proper took up the mandate, um, issue. And many schools who hadn't even started yet, uh, before we had, uh, voted on the original ordinance, had their mask policies in place as well. So I, I go back to what Councilmember Paul said about, um, supporting. And I, I think we certainly could have done that really with the resolution. Again, it would be a formal show of support that we think we need to do all we can to battle this. But I don't, again, it doesn't need to be a violation of law if you're not doing so. So, um, the, the, um, the policies in place, um, prior to us taking this, this up, um, I, I think, again, is something that we could have actually done as much good with a resolution, uh, rather than a mandate which makes it a violation of law. I, I, I'm assuming that maybe there will be some, um, there may be a, a, a floor amendment for, um, a metric. So I, I think I'll reserve those comments as it relates to metrics if that's, if that issue is taken up. Uh, but that, it's, it's, this is, um, it, it is an interesting situation we find ourselves in too, that we're talking about the city of Omaha proper. Uh, I talked to Councilman Festerson earlier today and, and, uh, you know, Pete, Pete and I have known each other for a long time. Uh, grew up on the shores of Lake Manawha to some degree together. And we have, we have great conversations and, and maybe like Amy and Ben, don't necessarily all, always agree. But we can have those civil discussions as it relates to plastic bags or, or recycling or, or mask mandates. And so in our conversation today, I, I actually brought up the idea that it's interesting that we're talking about a mandate for the city of Omaha proper. Doesn't include SIDs. It doesn't include any of the communities around us like Bellevue or Valley or La Vista or Gretna. Much like the, the plastic bags when we were discussing those, it's, that is, uh, that was going to be an issue that affected Omaha proper only. So the, the virus doesn't know that it's supposed to stop at Harrison Street and not cross the road. I mean, if, if, if there is truly a strategy that were workable and, and that could affect this, I think that's, that would be a, a proper road to go down. And if, if it would include masks, again, I think that should be on a voluntary, uh, basis and not be a violation of law. We're a great community. Omaha is. The metropolitan area is. I think with, certainly with, with education and encouragement from elected officials and business leaders and community leaders, we could do that. We could do that on a voluntary basis. Again, I don't think it needs to be a violation of law in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harding. Councilmember Pauls, you're recognized.
Thank you. Uh, just a couple of comments. I do realize it would be nice just to say, let's do it. But I, I want to emphasize, the school districts have asked us to help them out. The businesses have asked us to help them out. They're asking for our help. And, uh, I, I just think that is something that we need to consider. And also, I was very concerned about this. I even talked to the mayor about this. I have a lot of respect for her. And I told her the, the direction I was going, uh, thinking that we need, do need to continue this. And she was in agreement with that. So I think if we can get the leadership and, and a good deal of the council does give us some direction that the city should proceed in for a while anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pauls. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
I'm sorry. I was, I hadn't finished a thought, and I just reminded myself of it when I was talking about the virus stopping at Harrison Street. And thank you, Councilmember Pauls, for your additional comments because it, it spurred my memory. Uh, what I was going to say is that when I was talking about having community leaders and business leaders and elected officials, um, talk about this, again, wouldn't you think it would carry a lot more weight if we got the mayor of Bellevue and we got the city council of Bellevue and Gretna and La Vista and Papillion and Omaha and Valley and come together and say, look, let's do all we can to, to confront the virus. And one of the ways that might help is wearing a mask. So we, we have people from UP and, and First National and, and others that come into Omaha every day and leave Omaha every day. And maybe that's part of the reason why we're seeing a spike. I don't know. But if you then got a community or a metropolitan effort with a resolution to say, and, and have those community leaders say, look, let's do what we can, I think that'd be a great idea. But again, I don't think that needs to be a mandate.
Thank you. Um, you know, I just generally commenting, I've, I've said what my position is before, but I, I think it's appropriate to comment that where we are is, a country is kind of a microcosm in this chamber in terms of, the tendency in, in recent years has been to look for something somewhere to support your position and to reject science, whether it's, whether the temperature of the earth is warming or not. You could have 95% of the world's scientists in agreement. And people who choose not to believe it will look to the handful of people who reject that notion. There are people who reject laws outright. And, and we have people who are at the highest level of government who reward that. And so that's where we are. And that's why there's not, to me, just a growing tendency of COVID fatigue with people. It's recalcitrance. It is recalcitrance. It is to reject science. It is to tell you not to tell me what I can or can't do. The hell with the public health. And as I said to the person who called me yesterday, who doesn't think that I know who he is, you know, caller ID told me who the person is, okay? And I won't out that person here because I didn't tell him I would, and I would tell him if I was going to do that. Your freedom to infect does not exist to me under the United States Constitution. There's no greater duty of a public official than to safeguard the public health, safety, and welfare. We have done that since the beginning of this country. And we've done it by the rule of law. We've done it by the respect of law. And we've done it by the enforcement of law. But as we all know, there is no enforcement of this law. That is another reason why I believe the rates are going up. There's not been one citation issued under this ordinance by the Omaha Police. Not one. As Dr. Poor testified at the public hearing. So what are you afraid of? As Dr. Khan said, there is a community- As Dr. Khan said, there is a community who simply refuses to respect the law. And that is on any number of issues in our society today. And nothing the government does or the city council does is going to change those few who choose to disrespect the law unless the law is enforced. This is an infraction of $25, and even that's not enforced. Is anyone asking Chief Schmodderer why the Omaha Police Department doesn't enforce this? How about the citizens who are now emailing me and sending me photos, our police officers aren't wearing the masks in the city of Omaha? So for those who are afraid of enforcement of this ordinance, at least today, you have nothing to fear because there hasn't been any enforcement of this ordinance. And that is a problem. And that, to me, is a reason why the rates in our community are going up recently. There is nothing to fear from this ordinance. Now, I don't know, as I said, about what the world, the public health and epidemiologists and infectious disease doctors know, but I do know this. We are fortunate in Omaha to have the, among the very best in the world, right here. And when you see a group, as esteemed as we have, feel so compelled to go out in front of the television cameras yesterday and implore us to continue this ordinance, that's what we're going to do, in terms of, I say "we" as "me." I'm going to follow that. And to the person who called me yesterday, who has a clinic treating people, next time you will be outed for your ridiculous positions that you took. Because what I heard is simply, you're not going to tell me what I can and can't do. And I think if Omaha knew who you were and what this ridiculous position is, you would be in a far different place. And you know what? If people aren't wearing masks, the problem is, they don't know if they're infecting people most of the time. You don't know. And to be so lazy-fare with the public health of others, to me, shows another issue going on in our community, in our country. It's become a what about me, not about what about we, not what's doing what's best for our city, or what's best for our state, or what's best for our country. It's all about me. What do I want? What do I don't want? The heck with what you want. And I'm sorry, Dr. Merritt, but to, just to dismiss the number of deaths that we've had in this country, is I interpreted what she said as, oh, we've only had a couple hundred thousand die. That, to me, sounds reminiscent to Ford with the Pinto, or Chevy with the Corvair. You don't take a position that deaths are acceptable when they're preventable. And this is a measure, not perfect, that is effective, not perfect, as one of the things we can do, as the doctors have told us, that is accepted by science, whether you choose to believe it or not, as preventing the spread of this virus. And so, to me, what's been demonstrated in this chamber, in this outright disrespect and contempt, is a disrespect and contempt for the rule of law and acting in a civilized society. And it is an affront, an insult to democracy, that you don't come down and act civilly and respectfully. And that, to me, is just a greater issue of what's going on right now. And we need to get back to the days, as Councilmember Melton said, where you can come down here, state your opinion, do it so respectfully, and then listen to the other side. But just because you're not on the side that particularly comes down and the majority on that, that deal, doesn't give you the right to act so contemptuously. It's, it's, stand down, sir, you're out of order. You're, we're keeping the front row clear, Mr. Store, for public distancing. Please have him move out of the front row. We're keeping the front row clear in the middle for social distancing. So to those of you who have contacted me to continue supporting this, rest assured, I believe and accept science. I believe and accept the rule of law, and I believe in the enforcement of law. And I believe wholeheartedly in the Constitution of this United States, of the state of Nebraska, and of the Charter of the City of Omaha. And that's why I am voting for this. Thank you.
Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Pauls, Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to two. Item 20, an ordinance to acquire private property for the 51st and Madison Exposed Sewer Crossing Stabilization Project.
The public hearing on item 20 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 21, an ordinance approving a bid from Cartico for the Omaha Police Department Officer Wellness Mobile Application in the amount of $106,600.
The public hearing on item 21 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents?
We see menace, 3306 Burt Street. I'm a proponent. However, I can't stop thinking about what my friend Ford said.
Stay on this topic.
Yes, on, on the expenditure for $100,000. My friend Ford said that the police need to prove themselves worthy before asking for more money, or for you guys to approve more money. So just like another item on this agenda, I think that this ordinance should be placed on file so that you can come back to it after you have discussions with a police department. That's my position. Even though I'm a proponent, the other item would be the mask mandate so that...
No, this is not mask mandate.
I'm, I'm, I'm wrapping up with my comments, Mr....
No, you're out of order.
To place the mask mandate on file. Thank you, Mr....
Sorry, take a seat, please. The public hearing is closed.
Non-action items, items 22 through 34, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Roll call.
Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Pauls, Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 3:58.